Ah, thank you all for coming. Welcome. My name is Heather Schenk. I'm the city planner for the city of Concord. I have with me tonight Lee Einzweiler, who is one of our consultants from Austin, Texas, with Code Studio. We have been working for some time now, but I think we did our kickoff two years ago, on the update of the zoning ordinance. So tonight, what we're going to do is give you a short presentation and overview of the main points of the code, and what it does, and how it does it, and what some of the changes are. And then we're going to take some questions, and answer questions, discussion. We have a map up over on the wall over there, which is the proposed zoning map. I would just say briefly, the areas in white over there are part of Phase 2, so right now what we're talking about is Phase 1. The Phase 1 document is available online through the project website, which is conquertnext.info. The map is also available online. You can actually see the history of the documents that have been created thus far online. I will ask you, I forgot to mention this, or put the sign-in up there, but I have a sign-in sheet at the back, so please do sign in before you leave. There are also comparison sheets that I made, that are basically one portion of the proposed zoning about the districts. And so I handed that out, all out to you, kind of a little cheat sheet. I'll talk about it a little bit later. But if you didn't get one there, also on that back desk back there. Thank you for being here. I'm now going to turn it over to Lee.
Thank you. I am tempted to just leave this sit on the table. So this evening, we're going to just give you a high-level overview of the new ordinance, and how some of the components are supposed to work. So let me start by saying this is a draft. We welcome any and all comments on how to make it a better draft as it moves forward. We are hoping, in the process, to get through Planning Board and City Council by perhaps the middle of this year. So this is something that's somewhat imminent, so if you're vaguely thinking about reviewing it, now would be a really good time to review and put your comments in. Two separate kinds of comments: comments on the text, comments on the map. The comments on the text will make their way back to my office with assistance of the planners here. The comments on the text are really, the planning department here is working on those. So comments on the map directly to Heather or Sam is the most helpful, and comments on the text, then, if they come into Heather, they will make their way to us. So I want to talk for just a moment about what we're trying to achieve. Why are we even working on the new ordinance? So first and foremost, you've had some challenges in preserving community character. You've had some things that the community may not be happy with in the name of economic development. You've lost some lovely old buildings for surface parking lots. You've perhaps had some infill in neighborhoods that some people feel is not representative of the size or scale or look and feel of their neighborhood. So preserving community character is kind of the number-one reason for trying to get the regulations fixed, so they do a better job at ensuring that when new develop comes in, it fits into the existing character. So one of the biggest keys to that is rethinking the residential districts. The residential districts today are representative of a point in time when somebody put some lines on a map and said, "If new subdivisions happen here, we should have 5,000-square-foot lots here, and 10,000-square-foot lots over here," and whatever. It is a lovely idea when you're pressing it down onto a green, empty piece of land, but enormously challenged when you're pressing it down on a community that has been here since far before the zoning ever was. So...
Keep going.
So part of the reason for this change is to make sure that we get a chance to look at and right-size the residential districts. Now, it's not as easy as it sounds. If it were all just looking at subdivisions since the 1960s, it'd be pretty straightforward, because most of those have consistent lot patterns, and, you know, kind of measurable sizes, et cetera, and they're all about the same within a given subdivision. Unfortunately, that's not the way the older portions of the community were platted out. Over time, the original plating patterns were chopped up in different ways. People went to the back of a corner lot and chopped that off and put another house in back behind. People did all kinds of intriguing things to generate lots. And so there's very little consistency in your blocks in terms of that lot size. In fact, some analysis we did earlier in the project showed that really, probably, the majority of your lots were non-conforming. When you're non-conforming, you can still move forward, you can still do things and build and whatever else, but you're likely to have to come through special processes to get special permission to do relatively simple things in addition to the house or something else that seems like it's not a big deal. It just makes your house as big as your neighbor's house, maybe. That challenge is kind of constant under the current districts, because they don't fit what's on the land. So we spent a lot of time looking at lots and plating patterns throughout the community, all the way up to and including Pennacook, and tried to build some new districts that more effectively characterize what should be happening on those lots. So one part of that conversation, many of you will remember that recently, the state said, "You can do an accessory dwelling unit in your ordinance." And the city responded, and accessory dwelling units are an allowed thing here, but they're allowed only within the principal structure. So you could expand your principal structure to put them in, but fundamentally, they had to be in your house, and they had to be connected to your house with a door, which is not necessarily the way that people might want to live in relation to a renter or somebody else who might be in that unit. So there are some obstacles today to multi-unit development on those lots. And so ensuring that we can remove some of those obstacles, allow perhaps the equivalent of every main house could be two units, like the A U ordinance said, but then also potentially allowing for an additional unit in the rear, to the extent that the lots and the character of the area support it. Adding units by changing the parking requirements to more accurately reflect the fact that the in-town portions of the community have more access to parking resources around. They also, we also modified the standard about the distance away from your site that parking can be provided, so you can legitimately put your parking off-site. If there's a church down the street that doesn't need all of their parking spaces, you know, they can lease you a space, and you can park one of your cars there and one on your site, et cetera. We also modified the way that the landscape buffer works. The landscape buffer here had been, in many people's minds, fairly excessive. It actually required, once you got to multi-unit, which is three units or more, if you had three units on your site, you had to put a major vegetated buffer around your site, because you were a bad thing to have in the neighborhood, and therefore, you had to buffer yourself from everybody else. So that buffer, while it may be appropriate, if you're talking about industrial development to residential development, at three units, we probably don't need those, that scale of buffers. So that buffer is no longer included. So now, you could have your mother-in-law unit as a detached structure on the lot, so that's a new allowance. We have tried to make sure that there are some nominal aesthetic standards about new buildings that come in, in these areas, and they include the amount of windows that face a street. There's no control in the ordinance on ones that don't face a street, so interior lotlines or a rear lotline, we're not controlling the windows. But if you're facing the street, we want to be sure that you're offering windows, and actually, that you're offering a door that faces the street as well. So we also set the maximum building length, because one of the things that can happen in today's ordinance is, if you have enough lot width, you can have a very big wide house, even though every other site on your block has a narrow little lot, and the house is basically goes into the lot instead of across the lot. So you could have things appear that are out of character as people try to accumulate lots to get a bigger house. One of the other things about housing opportunities is that all of your non-residential districts that allowed residential uses in them, the mixed-use kinds of districts, had density restrictions in them that set the unit sizes within those areas. And by setting those, we're really, perhaps excessively tinkering in what the market might bring. If we're okay with the size of the building, its height, the coverage on the property, you know, the windows facing the street, we'll be asking for on those kinds of buildings as well, if we're fundamentally okay with the building that is built, is it really critically important that we know whether it is 13 three-bedroom units or 20, you know, one-bedroom units? It's not critical for us to set density. So the form of the development, in most people's minds, is really much more important than what's going on inside. Now, that doesn't mean that the parking amount wouldn't change with those two kinds of places. The more, right now, the way the standard works is, everybody is providing two spaces per unit. So we've offered to modify the parking standard, including altered standard in this ordinance, to support that notion that we don't have to restrict the density in those buildings in the mixed-use districts. And in fact, I think in many ways, those are places we really want to encourage development, down back behind downtown in the Opportunity Quarter and other settings where we could see development intensifying over the years. In addition, one other modest thing at the opposite end of the extreme is that we have modestly improved the cluster standards outside the urban growth boundary. So if you have one acre, two acre, or four acre lots, which are the three districts that lie outside the growth boundary, there are now some slightly different standards that trigger cluster. If you have four units or more that you're going to build, or if you're building a street associated with your project, you're going to have to use the cluster provisions. The cluster provisions are what allow us smaller lot sizes in trade for a substantial amount of open space, 60% open space on the site. So those cluster provisions have been around for a long time. There's some very good cluster development, but they, the gateway into those had been murky, and there was really no way to force people to do cluster before, and now we have a requirement that they do that kind of cluster. We are also working to streamline the overall document. So right now, as I said earlier, many of the lots don't meet either the frontage requirement minimum or the area requirement minimum to be considered a conforming lot. So by right-sizing the districts, we're trying to bring as many as possible into conformity. But pushing back against that is, the smaller we make those numbers, the more likely that you'll find lots that can be split up and create new subdivision, create new lots, not just new units on an existing lot, but actual new lots for a new principal house. So we are trying to balance, so the numbers that we have chosen in these areas are trying to balance those two ideas. Not to split too many lots that you wouldn't already look at and say, "Oh yeah, that's a double lot, so yeah, it's okay if that becomes two." But don't split that one, because then you'd have to tear down the house. And that's one of the things that we're trying to encourage here, is we're using as many rules as possible to try to hang on to the existing houses that we have and try and get reinvestment in them. We are talking about raising the thresholds for site plan review, so that smaller-scale projects that really just follow, simply follow the administrative rules would be dealt with administratively. The larger-scale projects, of course, would always be here before the planning board. The standards for larger developments that trigger site plan review or subdivision review should be in front of the planning board, right? So the rules for them came out of our zoning book, for the most part. The smaller project rules are still in here, but the large-scale project rules are in the site plan standards and the subdivision standards that are promulgated by the planning board for their use in reviewing that kind of development. So Heather has been working very diligently in the background here, so that by the time we are bringing forward this ordinance, we'll be bringing forward a replacement for the site plan standards that will be handling issues related to those larger-scale lots. One of the other challenges is, right now, one of the ways that you get flexibility in the ordinance is you head over to the zoning board appeals and you get a variance. And if you're already in the site plan process, you thought you were in this trajectory here, and then the planners told you, "Well, you're breaking one of our rules, so now you need a variance, so now you're going over here, and you have to finish that process, and then you're allowed back into the site plan process." So one of the things that we've suggested is that on sort of planning and design issues, not really relief, not the kinds of things like, "I have an incredibly steep slope on my lot, and I really just need to move the house over to the flat spot, and can I get into this side setback a little, because the land is flatter over there?" That's the perfect kind of thing that you go for a variance for. On the other hand, we have a number of things that are actually actively discussed during the discussion of the site plan, and now we're trying to allow a conditional use permit for them, so that the same body that's reviewing the site plan can actually do that piece of the permitting as well. So shorter, straighter path, single body that's already prepared to discuss your site plan, and now they get to discuss some, a way to condition your site, but allow you some relief to some of the rules that we've specifically expressly said you can have conditional use permits for. We have, in the procedures section of the document, combined the subdivision and site plan procedure, because it's basically the same workflow. You're going to see the same people, you use different rules depending on what you were doing. If you're plating lots, you have to look at the subdivision standards. We heard a little earlier, there's been an upgrade to the basic engineering diagrams, so all of those come into play, right, when you're doing subdivision. When you're doing site plan, most of those standards are either in the zoning ordinance or they'll be in the site plan standards manual. So now, we have a combined process that reduces the need to kind of do a two-step again. Over here, get your subdivision; over there, get a site plan or other kind of approval. We've also tried very hard to simplify the use table and the parking table. In many instances, the use table, especially today, got a little bit long, went on for pages and pages, and was a little difficult to find anything if you're just kind of a first-time user, or only sometimes user of the ordinance. So we've tried to put things in categories to the extent that we can, and to consolidate uses in those categories. So a great example might be retail, right? So what all goes in retail? And you have to make decisions about whether a storefront bank is retail or not, you know. You have to decide whether things are in that same use, but then we can use one row on the table to allow whatever all the things are that we want to say are retail, or all the things that are medical, or all the things that are lodging. So it's a way to collapse down things. There are still some things pulled out separately if they cannot be treated like the general rules. So it's not in the use table, but we use a ridiculous example to help you understand. So as part of medical operations, right, you sometimes have radioactive material. Now, they have it in such small amounts that we don't usually hold that against them. But let's say you had somebody who was collecting up all that radioactive material, but since it related to medical, they wanted to say, "Well, we're medical, we can be here, you know, right next to all of these things that are like us, like these doctor's offices, et cetera." But really, what they're doing is stockpiling radioactive material. Well, clearly, those don't belong in the same category, and that's the way these kinds of decisions can be made. The criteria are there, the example uses are there, to make all those kinds of decisions, to make sure that we're not on a slippery slope, simply because someone called something a little different. You know, today it's doggy daycare, but is it really a kennel? And is it going to be, you know, an animal spa next time somebody comes? Heaven knows. They all kind of boil down to the same thing. And the use system is consolidated and simplified to help people make those decisions about where uses are allowed. Finally, the zoning map itself has been updated to go with the new ordinance, and in terms of the residential areas, that came down to right-sizing the lot sizes and the allocation of rights to the various parts of town using the new districts. For the most part, the non-residential districts are converted over to a new version that might have a new name, but it's fundamentally, the underlying rules for it are in essence the same. And the really tough parts, that we don't know what they should be in the future, are the pieces left out in white for next year, for the end of this year, after we've gotten this piece adopted. We'll go back and try to figure out what rules should apply to all of those pieces. So some new things on the zoning map, a conservation district. So when I first came to town and looked at your zoning map, everything outside the growth boundary looked like you could develop it, because you weren't showing anybody all of your special things like, "We have a lot of conservation easements out there, we have a lot of parks out there, there's a lot of land that's not available." So the minute we made a map with all that green in those outlying areas, I calmed down a lot more, because there's just not anywhere near as much land developable out there as you might imagine if you weren't seeing it. So we've created that category as much as anything to sort of manage those uses, but also to make them show up on the zoning map, so that we understand where they are.
Dark green?
So the really dark green is park, and it's closer in town, but the outlying, sort of medium green is a piece of land that's either in public ownership or has a conservation easement on it if it's in private ownership. So all of those are protected lands. So it's very exciting to look at Pennacook Lake and find that much of it is protected, right, because it's your water supply, so great idea.
It's actually the watershed. You should clarify that that's the watershed district.
The lightest green around Pennacook Lake is the former watershed overlay, which we have made back into a base district by just consolidating the overlay rules and the base district rules. So that one is called residential watershed now. In addition, we tried, as hard as we could, to eliminate split zoning. A lot of the splits, so split zoning is when a single piece of land, like your lot, has two different districts applied to it. You know, this can go in the back and this can go in the front. In most cases, we didn't really mean that, we just had bad maps over the years. And so Sam is working extremely hard to eliminate the split zoning and realign those with the lotlines, so that by the time we adopt this map, with a little luck, we will have captured most of the split zoning. If there is split zoning, it would be a larger parcel, and it would be done very intentionally, right? Oh, you know, that portion's conservation, and this portion can be built on, right? Those kinds of things will still potentially be split zone, but not much. Finally, one of the more interesting things, and we'll talk about it in a moment, and we should really talk about it with anybody who's curious after the meeting, we can actually kind of look at your lot and talk with you about it if you're curious. But the residential districts are now, the amount of bulk and mass of building and the number of units that can be allowed on your lot are now going to be defined by the frontage of your lot. And that may seem strange at first. You might say, "Wow, if I have a huge lot, I should get more units." Well, many of you know from around here that many of your large lots are not necessarily buildable, right? The back portion is wetland, it's a steep ravine, it's something else, and so there is that challenge. Also, when we think of especially the in-town neighborhoods, what is everybody's perspective of a neighborhood that maybe is not the one that their house is in? It is of the houses along the street. That's what we see in the neighborhood, is we see the pattern that's along the street. And so using the frontage to help us gauge whether we're staying in that pattern or not is really helpful. There will always be, because a lot of this stuff happened before zoning, there'll always be some big lots, and there will always be some very strange, very little lots. But the allocation of rights is kind of set to make sure that the most lots conform without allowing too many lot splits. So it's been this kind of balancing of making sure we're not resubdividing lots, but making sure that we are adequately allocating rights. So that potentially, on the typical lot in a district, you would be getting two units, which theoretically could be in the main house, and the possibility of adding a unit in the rear yard, for example. So the residential districts are now defined by that frontage of their lot. So you get a unit count, and you get an amount of livable area. The livable area is the bulk and mass of the building, the unit count is how much you can split it up. In some areas, you might have a very large building and only be able to put two units in it. In other areas, you might have a somewhat modest-sized building, as you come closer to downtown, you might have a smaller building, but still be able to split it into two or three units. So those opportunities, they parallel what has been allowed before. They're a slight enhancement of rights, what some people might call adding a little bit of gentle density. It's better actually for us to put a little bit of density everywhere sprinkled like fairy dust than necessarily to put our density in big lumps somewhere and change the neighborhood character, right? Those big buildings are out of character. They create large parking lots, they often take the trees down, they have other impacts that we're not happy with in our neighborhoods. But if we're sort of gently infilling, and for the most part, retaining the existing homes, we hope we'll be in a better space after that. So what do all of these, you know, cool new ideas look like? Well, they're much more visual. So for the person who is building in a residential district, this happens to be R5, which is a 5,000-square-foot lot with a 50-foot frontage in the old language, and it would still require that for new subdivision. So only if you had a 10,000-square-foot lot and 100 feet of frontage could you split a new lot off of your lot in this district, right? So those are, that's some of the balancing going on. The allocation of rights is happening then based on the frontage of the lot. If you have a big, wide lot, you're going to get an allocation that would allow multiple houses potentially across the front of your lot. It'd have to be a big lot, it'd have to be two or three times the size of a normal lot. On a normal lot, you'll really only have room for one house across the front, and that's kind of the way it's set up. Additional units then potentially show up to the rear where that's possible. In the mixed-use districts, again, very visual, this is the downtown district, so you'll see a downtown-like building with the required step-back in the upper stories, and the rules in the central business just are fundamentally the same that they have always been, but just ported over into this format that shows rules for the district itself, rules for the lot, the placement of the building on the lot, and the new building itself. We also have the use table. Right now, the use table is color-matched to the zoning map, so if you've gone to the zoning map and figured out you're light purple, or I'm dark yellow, or I'm greenish, you can go here and look at the same column. We're using the same colors to match the two together. The use table is now two and a half pages long, it's one page longer than what you're seeing here, this isn't all of it, but that two and a half pages covers the entire spectrum of uses in the community. There is also a need in this community still to have buffers in the right places. So transition buffers are proposed anywhere that non-residential districts are abutting the residential districts. They go on the non-residential property, they go on the commercial or mixed-use property. They go on the non-residential property. They go on the commercial or mixed-use property. They go on the industrial property. Um, and they, um, are in two sizes right this minute. If you have a short building of a single story, you get a 15-foot-deep buffer and a wall. If you have a taller building, it sits further back, 30 feet, and we have a deeper buffer and wall adjacent to it. So, uh, this transition will exist. Uh, you can see the planting pattern for it over here on the right. It will exist on the other side of a wall from your home. Uh, and over time, it will grow up and cover not only the glare and things that might come from, from that business, but eventually, as the trees come in, you may not even see the building next door. We also wanted to point out that, um, the review authority here was, uh, sometimes unclear. There were no flow charts. There were no ways to understand, if somebody told you had to get a something, "I have to get a variance." How do I get a variance? Who do I go see? What are the steps? So we have a single chart here that has each of the review bodies across the top, and then the processes along the left-hand side, so that you get a little shorthand version of, of how a procedure works. And then each procedure starts with who it applies to, how to do the application, and then the requirements for, for moving forward through the process. So it's, it's much more stepwise than it was before. Much of the material is still based on your original material, but it's been organized slightly differently. So, um, for the project, we created, uh, our own project website that we manage. It's called Concordnext.info. It's linked away from the planning department. It's not on the city's website, and that's so that we can update it more frequently. Um, we can take comments at this website. You can actually, um, click on something and comment on it. Um, uh, the latest, uh, schedule is typically up here. Um, all of the project history, if you follow that, uh, tag for documents, you can go back to all the prior documents. Anything we've published publicly since we started the project is up here still and can be reviewed. You can see the crooked path we have taken to where we are today. Um, and so we encourage you to use the website for information about meetings or to get a copy of the draft. The map is on there as well. Uh, so you're welcome to grab any of those from there. In addition to any conversation we might have tonight, I would encourage you to, um, continue to send questions to Heather, who's managing the project on City's Bat. Um, download the draft if you're even vaguely interested. Uh, most of it's fairly simple to read. Just read the part you need. This is not a novel. You don't go from the start to the back, unless maybe you're one of those members of the board who's been sitting here forever and just wants to know what everything in there is. Um, providing written comments is the most helpful thing you can do. Because then we've got those, and sometimes we read one and we say, "Well, a lot of people would be interested in that." And we'll actually post the comment on the web and respond to it that way. Some of them are very technical and they're very, you know, particular to a given site, so we may reach back out to you directly to talk about that. Um, finally, this will be going through a formal planning board process and getting a recommendation, and that is a public process, so you'll be able to speak up and talk about it at that point. And when it gets to city council, same thing. It's a public hearing. Uh, there's a formal process for making comments, and, uh, the public will be welcomed as well. So, um, uh, I only want to point out one more thing. We are following the adoption. Once we get this heavy lift over, we're going to go back and try and figure out what the right zoning for the white pieces is. So if you have opinions about those, just bite your tongue for a little bit until we get this heavy lift over and, uh, get this, uh, piece in place. And we'll be back out and talking about, um, all of the various white areas that remain on the map. Those are going to continue to use the old districts and the old code right now. Everything else will be in the new code once it gets adopted. So, um, with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Heather in case she have any corrections or anything else.
She's taking notes.
To help you with questions.
No, I just, I did want to make one or two corrections and also, um, go a little bit more into some of the districts. Um, I think Lee mentioned that, uh, we currently don't require cluster, but we actually do require cluster in the city of Concord for, it started out when I got here, cluster was required for any development, any, any major or minor subdivision in the RO district, um, which was a challenge. So we changed that so that it was not required for minor subdivisions, um, because, you know, someone might have a 100-acre lot and just want to subdivide off two for a family member, and they didn't want to necessarily put 60% of, of that. So we changed that a long time ago. Then we found that there was a challenge because people were carving up the RO district into frontage lots, which was, which was problematic for a number of other reasons. So basically, we, we adjusted the thresholds and permissions. Um, we don't necessarily want people to be able to get smaller lots on our, uh, our, on our, yeah, state roads or, uh, rural roads, um, you know, out on Hoyt Road or wherever. We don't want people getting smaller lots and more driveways out there. Uh, we want people actually creating new developments that are going into the property. So we don't want to give people incentives to do those frontage lots. We want to not allow them to do those frontage lots. So we just changed things a little bit so that you only get the benefit of, of the smaller lots if you're actually doing a cluster. Way too much detail, but all this stuff has, is, can get complicated. Um, so that, those are some of the changes that we made to allow that. Uh, I want to just point out, I'm not sure if you mentioned it, but so currently, our residential zones are called RS, RM, RD, RN. Um, the, the new convention, which you can see in the sheets that, that I handed out for you, doesn't, doesn't name the zone based on, uh, you know, how many units you can have. It names the zone based on what the size of your lot is. And what that is, but why we did that was because, like Lee said, we were looking for consistent characters to identify the neighborhoods. So for the most part, the boundaries of the districts did not change at all, because there actually are very consistent patterns in the city. So the R40 district is 40,000 square feet. That's what you would need to subdivide. The R20 is 20,000 square feet. R10 is 10,000. So now, all the districts are named based on how much square footage you would need to actually subdivide. And we picked those numbers, not necessarily because they were the average of the lots in those districts. We picked those numbers, excuse me, to allow, to, to increase the amount of non-conformity, uh, or, I keep saying non-conformity. To increase the amount of conformity in the district without incentivizing subdivisions. So in other words, we picked a number that was high enough that the average lot would not be able to subdivide, but that was low, low enough, as low as we could make it, so that the majority of the district was in compliance. So like, if you're walking down the street, you may see a, a, a consistent pattern, and then there'd be, maybe that lot that is a double lot. It looks like a double lot. It's bigger than everyone else's lot. That lot under the current code might be just a smidge, um, too small for them to subdivide, even though it's obviously like a double lot compared with everybody else's lot. Under the new code, that lot most likely would be able to subdivide, but not all the other lots, not everyone else. And certainly not those that most likely have their home in the middle of, of the lot, because they, they wouldn't be able to subdivide that. So those are just a few, um, of the factors that we looked at when determining how to, how to choose the numbers that those new districts are. Um, the R, I also wanted to mention the purpose of some of the mixed-use districts. So if you, if you look at the zoning map, if you look at the chart that I have there, the, the R districts, the residential districts, are in that sort of pinky, pink color. Uh, the MX districts are in purple. Um, so we basically got, we've got residential districts. We've got mixed-use districts. And then we've got, um, special zones, special districts, which is basically industrial, institutional, highway, commercial, uh, and, uh, I think that's all we have right now.
Open spaces.
And the open space, which are, they're, they're basically just copy and paste it from the old code. There's, there's nothing much changed there at all. Um, in fact, a lot of the districts, the actual standards are not changing. How we're looking at them is changing, but the actual standards are not changing in many of them. The MX districts, uh, so for one thing, we got away with the performance districts. There's no more performance districts, which were previously, um, CBP, the central business performance, uh, the civic performance, the gateway perfor-, well, the gateway performance still exists because we haven't got to phase two yet. So in the old code, the gateway performance still exists. Uh, office park performance, similar to gateway performance, and then the...
CVP.
Opportunity corridor performance. So now the standards that were embedded, are now embedded in those districts. So there, you don't have to go to different places in the code to figure out what special standards apply to those districts. It's just going to be embedded in the base district. Um, the, the central business performance district is, is really, is the downtown core. There's nothing really that's changed about that at all. The opportunity corridor performance district, formerly performance district, um, in our Vision 2020 plan, in our opportunity corridor master plan, in the city of Concord 2030 master plan, all has a vision for that whole opportunity corridor, which is high-density, uh, multi-story buildings, mixed use. Uh, you know, there, there are these exciting, um, engaging visions that we have. Well, if you look at the old code, it does not even allow that kind of development in that district. So what we have now in the new code, it changes the, the dimensional standards and the minimum requirements to not only allow, but require that type of development. So there's now block and street standards to encourage the urban grid to extend into those parcels. There's now, there, there will be a minimum requirement for two-story development in those areas. Um, we're, we're now allowing residential development in those areas, which previously, if you can imagine, residential development was not even allowed in the opportunity corridor performance unless it was immediately adjacent to the central business performance. Um, so we made a number of changes, like the lot frontage previously, or currently, is 150 linear feet. So 150 feet is, that's like a suburban sprawling commercial development type to require somebody to have 150 feet of frontage if they want to subdivide or do something on that property. So we've made it 50 feet, which is much more consistent with what an urban block looks like. So it's 50 feet frontage. Now we have a minimal, or a build-to line, which means your building has to be a certain distance from the street. You have reduced setbacks, which allows urban form. There's actually zero side block setbacks, which means you can place your buildings immediately adjacent to each other exactly how they are in the central business performance. We, we, uh, we're proposing to eliminate parking requirements in the OCP, so, or MX OC, rather. Uh, so there's, there's really, um, no reason why we can't encourage that kind of density to occur in that area now. The OC, the MX OC is really the highest opportunity area for like density and new development for downtown. So we really tried to write the code to encourage that, and we're trying to get the word out that that's, that's what that's doing now. That's what we want to see there. Um, the MX, so the urban commercial district, I'm moving on now. The urban commercial district, um, currently, and, and is proposed to remain in the same location, um, is basically on either side of the central business performance, so it's north and south Main Street. Lee has been calling it the shoulders of downtown, which I kind of like. Um, so currently, in the urban commercial, there's no real requirement to encourage or maintain uh, or require the, that urban fabric to continue. So if you look at north, north or south of downtown, you, we really do have a lot of buildings that, that are fronting on the street without parking areas. You know, that, that urban form has been, has been preserved, um, fortunately, in a lot of instances. Um, but then you've got those, you know, like the, the Domino's or the Dunkin' Donuts or, you know, there's been this gap-tooth creep into those areas where some of the urban form would either maybe was never there, or it's been lost. No one ever required it to be continued. So the urban commercial, the new proposed, uh, MX U, which is urban, the former urban commercial, will require those buildings to come up to the street. So any new development will be required to kind of, uh, be patterned after that urban downtown development form. Um, and it will have to have parking to the side or to the rear. Existing businesses that want to expand are going to have to expand towards the street to come up and, and to fill in those gaps. So that's a change to the MX U. Um, the MXT is the transitional district. Currently, we have the urban transitional district. Um, in most of the areas, I noticed when I got here, in most of the areas where you have the MXT, where, where it was existing, were areas of like beautiful historic architecture. Um, they're basically, uh, residential-looking buildings with that type of architecture, um, but that had allowed multiple different types of uses. So a lot of the, uh, the urban transitional, what we're calling MXT, was for instance on like Green Street, um, some, some, South State Street, uh, you know, really beautiful historic old homes that might have nonprofits or legal offices or, you know, you know, some other type of, um, legal professional service-type offices. But there was nothing in the code that really preserved that type of development. So one of the things we've tried to do is, is put standards in there that basically incentivize and encourage the preservation of that historic architecture. It actually says in the intent statement, "To preserve, you know, the existing historic fabric while allowing for a transition to non-residential uses." Um, so that's, uh, not necessarily a different district, but we're sort of trying to make it actually function to preserve some of the, some of the character that's there.
Residential district.
Yeah, I was going to, so that, so formerly, there was much more that was in civic. So some of the areas I'm talking about now were actually zoned, um, civic performance. And I feel that they were probably zoned civic performance because of those, uh, office type, service-type uses that were in there, like different state offices or legal offices. So the uses were consistent with what you would think of as civic. Um, however, the civic, if you think of civic downtown, it really is more of the massive building types that, uh, is, is encouraging, I think it's a 45-foot height limit. Um, so, you know, we're talking like big sort of massive block buildings, as we find in some of those civic areas. Um, and so having zoned some of those nice old historic architecture homes, and those beautiful homes civic, really incentivized it. It doesn't prevent someone from knocking one of them down to build a taller, bigger, more massive building. So we, we took everything out of civic that wasn't really literally a municipal use or some type of civic, like museum or library or something like that. And we put, we just kept all that in civic. We took everything else out and made it the MXT. And that's to, so the MXT has a height limit of 35 feet instead of 45 feet. So this is, what I'm telling you right now is probably the, the only really significant change in terms of the location of the district boundaries that we did. Um, and that was to try to protect some of the historic architecture. So if you're lowering the height limit from 45 to 35, you're removing some of that, uh, logic for someone to tear down a house, because, uh, you know, a 35-foot massive, you know, building doesn't make as much sense as being able to do that extra, uh, story on there. Um, so those are, those are the basic, the, 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 uh, MXT is also sort of the transition between the straight residential, um, districts that are just purely residential and the other more high-intensity commercial uses, such as the MXU or the CB, the central business. So that T is supposed to be sort of a buffer. So it makes sense to look like a house, but maybe allow different types of uses in there. Um, so that's some of the logic behind the changes that we made to the districts to try to make them function in this way. Um, that's all. I'm, I just want to go into that a little bit. Do you want to add anything? All right. Does anybody have questions? Yes, ma'am.
Um, so, and it's based on what you were just talking about.
Uh-huh.
Um, is that line already drawn? Because one of the comparisons that I've often made between Concord and Manchester is that our residential use comes very close to the downtown because a lot of, um, their use has not changed to the nonprofits and businesses. When I first moved to Concord, I lived up on Franklin Street. And over time, I could see more and more of those large buildings being turned into offices and businesses. So I'm wondering, you know, you're not only protecting the, the direction you've taken, it looks like it's protecting the architecture, but not the use. Because I still feel that, um, downtown, I think, is, can be more vibrant because people can actually walk. And so, does your, uh, do your changes take into consideration that line? Because you sometimes have to get the areas to cross it. And, you know, it's that same line is what prevents you from taking down a building and making it a parking lot. So have you thought of like where, you know, those changes could go all the way up to Concord Hospital? They could go all the way up to Franklin Pierce. Um, you know, they could keep creeping and creeping until there's not that wonderful residential core that...
So are you talking, I'm, I'm...
She was talking about MXT coming out from the downtown.
Yeah, where, is, where's your, like, do you have a red line? So you can look on the map and see where we, we basically took everything that was in civic and made it MXT. That, that wasn't literally a municipal or governmental use. Um, so MXT did not encroach into any residential area. We didn't expand it at all.
Well, so I guess that was my question, is how do you draw that red line so that there's not the, um, that slow creep like we've seen with houses being torn down?
Well, we didn't...
And like vacant or being used for parking.
We, we didn't include, anything that was formerly in a residential district is still in a residential district. None of that transitioned to MXT. It was essentially a downzoning of, of the...
To take civic down.
Yeah, to take, to, to, you know, concentrate civic into the literal civic uses and allow the other uses, um, to be called MXT. Because, you know, currently, they, they are. They're just, they're non-residential uses. That, there are some, there's mixed in some residential uses in there, but there are a lot of non-residential uses. Um, but it's to try to preserve that architecture and allow those uses to continue without saying, you know, 20 years down the line, if something happens to that structure or whatever, you know, somebody is not really incentivized to extend that urban block, you know, into that location.
We made it, one, much more difficult to do the surface parking lot?
Yeah, you're not allowed to surface... Yeah, you're not allowed to surface parking in MXT as a primary use.
And to, the distance that you are allowed to go to use adjacent parking has been extended so that it will be easier for people to not put the new parking lot in.
Do we, years ago, you couldn't park overnight on any of the...
Yeah.
Is that still true?
No.
Okay, I just did not, because I...
Yeah, the parking guru is sitting next to you.
Yeah. I just wondered, because years ago, you couldn't park on the...
The police department would change that order to...
Right. Not on all the streets.
Yeah. Right?
Okay. One thing you didn't talk about, which I find very surprising, is manufactured houses, what we used to call trailers, and then you increased the assessments on them all 20% and called them mobile homes. Now you've increased the assessment by 20%. You call them manufactured houses. And you've got a lot width of 200 feet for a manufactured housing park, when a lot of them are only 14 feet wide, and you're allowing 40 feet wide for real houses, which most of them are going to be more than that. So I think that you have a definite problem here.
Yeah, actually, Roy, and we can talk about this later, because I had this, actually, I thought it might have been a typo, I thought, because I had the same question. Currently, I think manufactured housing parks have a 40 or 50-foot frontage requirement for an actual, a whole manufactured housing park, and I figured it would probably be the same in the proposed code. I don't know, do you have a reason why? I meant to ask him this in private, but I haven't got to it yet, so, yeah.
So there's a couple of things. One, manufactured housing in place of your home is a different thing, right? So make sure we understand, we're talking about parks, talking about a leased park in which you lease a space, and there are usually recreational facilities, laundry facilities, other kinds of things. That is probably one of the worst-written sections of your current code. It's an enormous mess. We did get it reorganized and into the style of the new code, but we may not have captured all the metrics correctly. So I think that's what you're picking up on, is now the metrics are glaringly obvious, you know, and kind of staring out of that two-page layout at you. I suspect if we had gotten the graphics done, we would have figured out it doesn't quite work the way that it's set up. So I will be working on that some in this next couple of weeks as we do another round of edits. So we'll be back to metrics that look pretty much like your current metrics that she was talking about.
Should, really shouldn't have changed.
Yeah, I don't think there's any intent to fundamentally change that.
I'd like to add that I'm not sure if this is true of the current code. I think it may not be. As far as I'm concerned, if you just have a single manufactured housing, you know, and you're not in a park, that should just be treated as a single-family home and have the exact same standards in a district as any other home. It should be the same. If it's an actual housing, manufactured housing park, then you would have to comply with the standards that are in the code, which again, should have just been copied and pasted from the old code.
But traditionally, a manufactured housing park, they're closer together than regular houses, rather, and further apart.
Right, but that's different than if you just have one, and you're going to put it on its own lot, like a single-family home. So what you're talking about is almost, it's more like a condo form of development where you're in a park, and so I agree with you, that we don't, there's no intention to change that. Is there any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
You had mentioned that there's a time for the comments period. Is there a deadline for comments?
For 21...
That's a good question.
Probably about two or three weeks from now. At the rate that we're going, we need a new draft.
Yeah, our intention is to start talking about this at the very next planning board meeting, and then hopefully have a draft that can be proposed for recommendation to council in the April, April planning board meeting. So it's not impossible to continue having comments, you know, up through like the middle of March, but it would be great if people could get us our comments as soon as possible so that we can get them into that March version, if we could.
Tomorrow, we're going to look at the comments that we've gotten and how much work we have to do, and try to gauge when we think we could put a draft together. We'll put up on the website something about comments, and we'll probably send a note around. If you happen to be, if you signed up for the newsletter, we'll send a note around to everybody.
And the second part of this, you've had a number of meetings throughout the city. Have you had designated meetings in different wards?
Well, we had, so most of our meetings were here, and we focused on different sections of the code. So we had one that was designated for downtown, for mixed use, we had several for residential, we had some focusing on the use in the parking tables, and then we had a special session for Pennacook. And we had that at the Pennacook Elementary School last night, and then we also had this same public meeting at Pennacook Elementary last night. And we basically just had it there to be more accessible, you know. Fortunately for Pennacook, because of the weather was so horrible, we did get a pretty good turnout, weather considering. But we had a special meeting for Pennacook, because when I first got here in 2014, part of my charge was to finish up the Pennacook Vision Plan. And so there was a lot of work and conversations with that community that went into trying to finish up that plan, figure out what the community wanted. And at that time, I said to them, "I'm going to come back, I'm going to come back, and I'm going to show you what we did, and make sure it's what you really want." And that's essentially what that meeting was last night. And so that was, it was great, it was a good meeting, because they were, they were really happy, and they were, they did like the direction that we got to Pennacook. So that's the only special meeting we had because of that pass. Yes, sir?
Is it fair to say that this, the ultimate goal of this plan is to increase density in every area of the city?
No, I think, I think that the goal of the changes are to allow people to do more on their, to do on their property what they would like to do. So we don't have any push to increase density, but we want to give people flexibility to do what they want to do. You know, if somebody wants to have their son or daughter, just graduated from college, come in and live in their home, and they can't afford to live anywhere else, and they want to just, you know, build a little unit for them in their house, they would be able to do that. If someone wants their, to move out of their house into a smaller home, maybe in the ADU in the back, and allow their kids and their family to move into the house, you know, the existing house, they would be able to do that. That is really the focus, is allowing families more flexibility to do what they already would like to do on their lot, but, and in some cases, it indicates in the code that they should be allowed to do that, but there are so many obstacles and restrictions that are not apparent, that when you actually try to go and do it. Just as an example, in the current code, when you look at the dimensional standards for the downtown residential district, which is intended to be the highest-density residential district in that area, aside from the apartments out along the road, but the downtown residential district, if you look at the current, and it's on your list there, the current dimensional standards for the downtown residential district, were listed there for the multifamily district, are only applicable if you're doing a single-family home. So it's telling you one thing, and it's not true. So if you actually want to do a duplex, it's the standards that are above that, the second line above that, which aren't even listed in the dimensional standards, which I just found out recently, I thought that was for all multifamily development, I found out that's just if you're doing a duplex. If you actually want to do three units or more, it's a different set of standards. So baked into the current code is like all of these complicated issues that you wouldn't, you know, you wouldn't know from looking at it. So we really fixed all of that so that people can know what they're doing. I'm sorry.
So as a follow-up to that, I asked that for one reason, and then the follow-up would be the parking point that Lee made, and I heard it in a meeting this morning for the first time, that you can park up to 1,300 feet away...
Right.
And have it count. So again, the message out to the community is if you've got a 2,500-square-foot house that's a big rambling house, and you've got one or two people in it, and you could easily put two apartments on the second, second or third floor, but you only have a little teeny driveway on the side, if you can find parking 1,300 feet, which is what, a quarter mile?
Five-minute walk.
Five-minute walk away, you could create that, and that would count to all of the requirements from the city's perspective, right?
Yes.
And then, and on top of that, you said, and I just heard you say it, you can't have a primary, a primary use of a property be a parking lot.
Right.
So somebody's not going to rip down a parking lot area on, say, Warren Street, and make it into a parking lot that allows you to create...
That's right.
...buffered areas, right?
Yeah, that's correct. I just want to make one clarification, though. You get as many units as you're allocated based on your frontage. So you may, there may be situations where there are existing non-conformities. Based on your frontage, you may only be allowed two units. If you've got a house that already would not comply based on the standards that we're proposing, say you've got a 5,000-square-foot house, you're not going to be able to do, that's crazy, that's huge. Let's say you've got a 3,000-square-foot house, but you're only allowed 1,500 square-foot of livable area, or two units. You can't put in three, or four, or five, however many units you want, you still only get those two units. If you've got a 3,000-square-foot house, go ahead, make a 1,500-square-foot unit and another 1,500-square-foot unit. You can't put as many as you want, you can only put as many as you're allocated based on your property rights. So again, if you, if you already have a huge house, and you don't have those property rates for those units, you're not going to be able to...
And that's based on the frontage.
Correct.
So if you've got a 2,500-square-foot house that goes edge to edge on an old-style lot with a driveway at the side, you could still only have one, maybe two, in that.
Right, right. What we found...
Almost everybody's going to get two?
Right.
And that's even for the ones that are squeezed in.
Which is sort of consistent with the ADU, the state law for ADUs, which required you to allow ADUs in any district that allows single-family homes. I also want to point out that corner lots have more frontage, and so corner lots are inherently going to be allowed more units. So I did a, I did a unit analysis of different areas of downtown, because I was concerned, like, is this going to be consistent with what's actually on the ground in terms of units? And what I found was, the corner lots were the ones that already had more units. They were the ones that had four, or five, or six, or seven units. And it was the lots that are sort of interior to the block, and this is mostly in the more dense areas of, that on the map are called 2.5, or 5, or 7.5. So it was the corner lots that were having like three or four units, which was consistent with what they would be allowed to do under the proposal. Yes, sir?
Okay. I don't know how familiar either of you are with, yes, we used to have this thing called the Concord 2020 Vision...
Yep.
About the city. And one of the key items of Concord 2020 was it was a city of villages...
Yes.
That there were villages scattered around the city. And what has been happening, and what I'm afraid of, what you call sprinkled density, is we've been trying to merge those villages by having strip development along major roads.
Well, I think that, I'm going to let you answer, but, thank you for bringing up the 20, I referenced the 2020 Vision Plan earlier when I talked about the opportunity corridor, but that is exactly what you're talking about, was exactly the entire impetus for me, as a, for me personally, as a planner, for going with the form-based code and in the, like, the fulcrum around, the whole RFP that I put out was city of villages. We want to identify the village centers, which are East Concord, West Concord, Pennacook, downtown, and the Heights, and we want to create those village centers. Because in some cases, those village centers don't really exist. There's no there there, and we need to create it, and we need standards to create it. So some of those locations are part of Phase Two for exactly that reason. How do we create that sense that here is a village center? Also, part of that vision or plan or hope is that when we get to Phase Two, and we look at Fisherville Road, and we look at Loudon Road, and we look at the gateway performance in all those, all those areas right now, those areas don't have a vision. The, you know, opportunity corridor has a vision, Fisherville Road doesn't have a vision, Loudon Road doesn't have a vision. So we need people like you to come to those meetings and have opinions about those things so that we can maintain the integrity, create and maintain the integrity of a village character in those locations.
But part of the integrity of the village is separating them by not allowing such dense development between them.
So you got to look at the map. You got to look at the map, you got to look at the map. There is one district that we skipped lightly over in talking about the mixed-use district, it's called Mixed Use Neighborhood, and it is really the center of the smaller places. You'll see that purple color show up, that mixed-use color show up. It shows up east, it shows up over by the hospital, it shows up in a variety of places.
Do we have the map button?
Yeah. Here. Bear with me.
And some of the standards in the MXN, Mixed Use Neighborhood, were changed to reduce the lot size and the frontage requirements for development, and that was exactly to encourage and incentivize small-scale village development in those locations. So we don't want you to have to have a massive lot frontage to do development, we want you to be able to do it in a small scale.
This is glaring a little, and I apologize for that, but, just starting from north to south, Pennacook, right? And something that implements the Vision Plan is something we're continuing to work on. There's a center shown here, there's a center shown here, east. There are, there are a few more hidden gems in the city, here, here.
Can you identify where those are? Because the map, for most people, they probably don't recognize.
I have to admit, I don't know where they are. I've seen them, because we went and visited them all.
So I'll...
There's Pennacook. Oh, oh, there's Concord. Council Kretavec is giving us a geography lesson. Can you start again?
This is Rumford Street, Fosterville, this is by the bowling alley. This is East Concord, there's the Heights. This is...
No, wait, you just circled Manchester for the Heights. That's Manchester Street, the, yeah, where you had your hand a second ago is like where the new community center is.
If I point to them, you can say what they are. So this one's the one that I believe is East Concord.
East Concord.
Okay, there's a little one here, I don't know what it's called.
That is West Concord.
Thank you.
That's West Congregational Church.
There are, there are some little ones embedded here, so...
This is where Balance was.
There you go.
The Key Square, yeah.
That little triangle.
That's Warren Street and Pleasant Street, so it's down by where the high school is.
There's some kind of on the edges here, so there's one embedded in here.
This is where Chuckney Pizza is.
You know, there's one here, it's on the east side. So anyway, the point...
The main, the main five ones, though, are spread out.
The core, the core of those villages is here somewhere. It certainly needs more support. It would be great if more activity happened in those places that was walkable to the neighborhoods. And I think all the tools in the code would allow that, if anybody's ready to map it more aggressively, I think it could be done. And then you might expect that some of that same kinds of tools will get used in these white places, right? They just haven't been applied yet.
So I think it should be noted that when you're looking at frontage, each unit is 750 square feet. So if you have 100-foot of frontage and you're allowed two units, you could have 1,500 feet of livable space on your property. So when I was going through this, and I think I asked this question earlier, maybe you could explain to me the reason behind it. When you look at R40, and you look at the minimum frontage and the amount of livable space, you could have 1,500 square feet. But if you get into some of the smaller districts, it looks like, and you look at the minimum frontage, it looks like you could have 2,250 square feet. Could you explain why the, why the higher density?
So first off, over the last couple of days, including based on your questions and others, I think we've decided to allocate more area out in the outline area, not more units. So the unit count will remain the same as what you're looking at today, but we'll allocate more area in the house on those larger lots. Because at one acre in size, at two acres in size, at four acres in size, we don't really have any worries about the McMansion among the little, you know, tiny cute houses. It's not happening.
So you allocate more livable space?
Right.
We would allocate 1,500 square feet of livable space instead of 750. So the piece that you've been talking about, 100 feet of frontage, will remain 100 feet of frontage, that will allocate you two units.
Of 3,000.
Yeah, two units at 1,500 each would give you a 3,000-square-foot house, which is slightly larger than today's norm. The 2,250 is just about exactly what the national average single-family home is today.
May I if I could have a follow-up on, on where you go for some of the permits? So for some of the minor subdivisions, do you go to the planning department? Do you go to...
Yes.
And when would you go to code? What would trigger going to...
Well, code reviews every, now, currently, and moving forward, basically reviews everything for code compliance. If you go now for a billing permit for a code, you have a vacant lot, they're going to want to know, where's your house located? Does it comply with setbacks? You know, so code is always there.
So the...
Like debt and taxes, you always have to go through. But they, you know, but in terms of like review, you know, we raise the thresholds for plan review. So currently, there's a certain amount of, I'm just going to make up numbers because I can't remember them off the top of my head. I think currently, it might be something like 1,500 square feet of impervious surface triggers site plan review, okay? So anything under 1,500 square feet for whatever it might be, would just be like a code saying,[1783.16] would just be like a code, code saying, "Does this comply for a driveway permit or an excavation for whatever it is?"
So, my question isn't that technical. My question is, is that, there, there was a gentleman from code here yesterday morning.
Yeah.
And his concern was that the, the proposed zoning would create a bottleneck at, at code.
Yes, well, we've, we've since worked through a lot of those issues with discussions with staff. And there are a number of, you know, solutions and ways that we can approach it to, to deal with that moving forward. Including, you know, other staff, like if planning, there's certain things maybe planning does. Or, or, or just making the development community aware so that that doesn't occur.
Right, the concern would be that in trying to streamline it, you actually wind up taking more time or...
Right, right. And that's not what we want.
There's definitely a balance here. And the balance is between the design standards that take additional review and the risk associated with allowing developers to build without the design standards. You have some bad actors around, you know. Everything I hear about is not usually a project that should have gone the way it went. It's literally a project where somebody did something illegally, you know, broke the rules after the fact, you know, et cetera. There's all kinds of that stuff still lurking in your system here. And that's an unfortunate reality.[1657.74]